Let's call our meeting to order. Rise for the pledge, please. The pangs are back there.
Our pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every being and every soul.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you. First up tonight, we have our discussion items. We have a project update from Mr. Pickenbacher.
All right, as usual, you have your biweekly report in front of you. And as usual, anything that's highlighted in yellow are the changes since the last report that you've seen. Those two numbers down in the lower right-hand corner are the numbers to keep track of as shows the gap between what's appropriated in the one-time council expenditures and what you have committed to thus far. Changes in some of the projects, we do have the signed contract back on the NX generator and some product alternates have been submitted to our engineering firm to see if they're suitable substitutes. Item number 26, the fairgrounds website is up and running and we'll have a demonstration for you at your next meeting. Didn't think we had enough time to show that to you tonight, but we'll have that for you at your next meeting. We also have our social media presence up on both Facebook and Twitter and we'll have that available for you as well. The EMA ramp floor covering change started Monday and they are in the process of doing that and that's going to be about a week, week and a half project. We've added a new project and that is on line 35 and that's the Circuit Court Judge's Office Security and that is being paid for out of the building grounds budget and will start as soon as product has come in for that. The Coleman Center HVAC project, the other two units that we were waiting on have been installed and they are functional and the only thing we're waiting on is the completion of what was the temporary duct work on the first unit. So that should be done within the week and that'll close out that project. And then the HVAC project for the First Bank Expo Hall, that also has started. They've started laying the foundation for the outside units to be installed. Any questions?
About the landscaping in front of the Expo Center.
That's ongoing.
Are we doing that in-house or?
Well, there's a cost associated with it and that's what I'm working out. I feel like it should be replaced without a cost to us and the installer doesn't feel that way. That's where we are.
About the grass and around the cyclones.
And that has been taken care of, I think. I've been out there this week, but I think it's been taken care of.
Thank you. Mr. Plaster, do you have anything for us tonight?
Well, just a couple of things. First, to remind you that our elected officials and department head meeting is scheduled for next Wednesday at 9:30. You all in the council are invited to participate in that if you're available. We're trying to do what we can to make sure we have good communication between commissioners, department heads, elected officials throughout the county. So this is my effort to do that. And I also wanted to report to you that you allowed us some money to work with Baker Tilly and several offices on internal controls. That work has begun. In the next week or two, Baker Tilly will be meeting with those department heads and working on their internal control process. We'll continue to work through that this fall. Brad, do you or Max want to mention anything about our arrangement with Farm Bureau that was approved today?
Since you guys approved it, Brad, talk about it.
Just want to inform you that we had a generous offer from Farm Bureau to donate a gazebo, a 16 by 32 gazebo, all composite metal roof, very nice, to the fairgrounds. In return, we approved that we could give them the naming rights to the show arena for the auction.
Livestock.
Livestock auction for five years for that. It's going to be a very nice addition to the fairgrounds.
Absolutely. So our thanks to Farm Bureau for that generous arrangement and we'll continue to move forward with looking at naming opportunities on some of the other buildings that might support operations of the fairgrounds. So appreciation. Be happy to answer any questions. We continue to work through projects and if you have any questions, be happy to try to address those.
Does anybody have anything? All right, we'll move on to our action. First up, we need to approve the July 19 workshop minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Tony Gillis, second by Gary. And I need to do a roll call because we have Barry buried online all our votes tonight, don't we?
No.
We don't have to anymore?
He can't vote.
Okay, okay.
So he is monitoring the meeting.
Gotcha, okay.
Can't count for a, cannot count for a quorum, which you don't need and cannot vote, so you're free to.
Okay, that's perfect. Thank you. So all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none.
Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second. All in favor of the motion, say a five or say a aye.
Aye.
Same sign.
All right.
It's approved.
Okay, we have some 2023 employee requests. Kim? Or Max?
For Max.
Or Kim?
Find the paper here and just that. We've got several things that have been under review, a request by Earl and that have been returned to us. Some of those we're going to handle at the Personnel Committee meeting for September, but we have some this evening that we want to get taken care of, but there is pressing need to do that. The first would be the grant clerk for the auditor's office, which we have talked about. That has been reviewed to come up to a classification pay of $16.99 an hour. The auditor has agreed that that could be a part-time position and so we're putting that out for discussion.
I'm not agreed that they have it part-time.
I thought you had.
No.
I was told you had.
No.
You told me you had, but apparently changed this one.
I need it full-time. If I wanted part-time, I would have asked for it and I'm going to stick with what I asked for.
Okay, we've asked several times, how many grants you have, how many grants has Wayne Catty got?
I think I've right now got like 28 sitting on my desk.
That wasn't what I asked. I asked how many, how many grants has Wayne Catty got?
Oh, I don't think I can answer that. We don't know what all of the grants are.
We've asked for it several times. We haven't gotten them either. Should be able to count the grants we got. I will know all that.
I know. What did you say? I believe that since there's been a change from what we thought that we move into the requests that we'll take a look at in September and go on to the next one.
Officially, through our discussion, we had considered it being full-time. It was recent that the discussion took place that I was notified and agreed to be a part-time. And that's, so being full-time versus part-time is not new. I'm not saying that that's been a part of the discussion, so.
I apologize for my, my part in that miscommunication, but you know, we had that conversation last week and I shared it with you and obviously it was in here, so I apologize for that.
Jeff and I did discuss it, that's right.
And you didn't agree?
At that time, we talked about going part-time and after that I slept on it and I need full-time, so I don't want to be hypocritical about it and say to you now, well, I could get by with part-time, so that's why I stuck with the full-time.
But that did not get communicated back to us.
You didn't communicate that back to us, so we were a bit.
Not communicated to me, so I apologize.
That's my fault with Jeff.
And if I could add something, just because I've been working on different projects, I believe there's close to 195 grants between actual grants and state statute funds that we have to have. There's approximately that many in the fund report.
Not all of those are grants.
There are grants or there's state mandated funds that kind of work like grants that you have to keep track of and yeah, a lot of the different departments have those. I know the prosecutor has several, off the top of my head, but, but those things actually need to be somebody looked at and maintained, make sure that the money's coming in and going out like it's supposed to. And I'm just giving you that to what I think the number is close to that.
Okay.
Really, the grant, if the health department gets a grant, the health department should monitor that grant and the auditor shouldn't agree with that figure they got. My thinking is whoever gets the grant should monitor the grant themselves.
Well, well, part of it is that, I'm going to jump in here for Mark's part, is part of it is when they've got grants in the past, they don't have the grant copies in the office, in the auditor's office to say it starts this date and ends this date. If it's reimbursable, it's reimbursable up to, I'll say 500,000. And so if we run it, the red is 600,000, we're already 100,000 over. You know, it's just knowing that and keeping track and making sure that it gets in and out of the right funds because there are several of 4D that's really confusing. There's 4D clerk, prosecutor, you know, child support, 4D court. It's very confusing and some of those are more incentive funds, which aren't really grants. I know we have some courts people here, so they can jump in and correct me, but just, it's, it's just a lot of stuff for somebody to take a look at and trying to pick up and maintain. And the one thing I will say, because I've been to conferences and the state is pushing us to do more grants and more grants and more grants, that's all well and good, but somebody needs to pay attention to what are we doing with these. Everything is not about the general fund. We have seven pages of grants and state mandated funds and just, just for my part, just from having been the treasurer and knowing more about that report, I understand it more than the average person, I'll say. So I'm just saying there's a lot with that and if we try to pay attention to those things and make sure we're getting them in and out of the right funds. And I think that is what Mark is after, somebody to help maintain that. And that's not, and that's not putting anybody under the bus prior to this point. It's just the way of, you know, that's the way we've always done it. We haven't paid all that much attention to all of those. But now that we do, we just want to get it right once and for all and then match with all the different departments every single month with what they have in their bookkeeping piece. It's kind of like math balancing your checkbook at home. Here's what you have in your checkbook register, but what does the bank actually have? And we just want to make sure those two match. We did to a lesser degree prior, but now we want to try to make sure that we get it all every month. Everything matches and fix it within the month and not six months later.
Quickly, Mrs. Williams has been working with us. I appreciate what she's been doing. It's not something that would have gotten done if she hadn't helped because she knew where to look. She was also another person in the office to help do this stuff. But I just want to thank you out here. She understands when I talk to her about this stuff, what I'm talking about. And that's not always the case when I talk to somebody. So just thank you, Kathy.
You're welcome.
And she will continue, I hope, for a little while till we get some things done.
We want to get to the end of the list and quickly go to the county.
Hopefully the taxpayers will benefit from all this.
So Max, do you want Tony to request that we put this off until our next personnel meeting?
Well, we need a motion of some type, whether it's to table it, put it off, approve it, whatever.
If they put this on.
Make that into a motion?
Yeah, I'm not sure. I'd say agree that we need a motion.
Well, they just, if we don't act, I guess we don't need it. You're right. We need a, if we're going to take action, we need a motion. If we don't have a motion, we're not taking any action.
I would agree.
Yeah.
So it's going to die from lack of a motion. Is everybody?
So we bring it up next at the personnel meeting?
With the rest of the personnel request.
All right.
Next.
Probation. The bookkeeper position at probation has been empty or vacant for a little while. That, requested that that be reviewed to see if the classification needed change and it does, going from a three to a four, which changes the hourly rate from 19 to 18 to 21.31 an hour. They are, would like to get that advertised and filled as quickly as possible, but they were waiting for the reclassification before a change would be made.
We've been talking about this for a while.
Yeah, and all of you got an email a week or more ago about all these changes. So it's everybody's information. This is not new tonight as far as the information, so. The request is to raise the classification, which would be an additional $4,430.40 a year over what is in the budget currently.
So we need a motion to change the salary orders?
It's been empty for a while, so we should have an eligible one.
Probably okay for this year, I would assume, but later in the year, they can determine that.
Coin's shaking to say yes, it would probably go. So do you need a motion on the reclassification, then a motion to take us to salary orders?
At the next meeting, Kim says that she needs to have the numbers for line items and all that and amend the salary orders.
This one would be the same fine item, but it's still worth requiring sadly for its amendment? And I'd be more prepared to do that at personnel, oh, second.
What this, what this would allow today is for them to advertise the position at that rate and get in that process, which is going to take a little while.
Enter through the reclassification.
Well, if we approve the reclassification tonight, then they can advertise that that reclassified rate will change the salary orders in two weeks to reflect, which would be well before anything being paid.
I would make the motion, unless you have more discussion. I'll make the motion that we change that classification from three to a four. Is that all you need in there?
Yeah. And the post?
And posting higher?
Oh, okay. I thought you were saying, saying that.
I'll make that.
Okay, we motion by Kathy Williams, second by Gary Saunders. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. Next one.
Okay, we've had the request for some time from the courts to add a legal assistant in the three courts, the two superior, one and two, and Circuit Court. Full-time position, a new position. The hourly rate would be 21.31. We've talked about this off and on for quite some time and feel that it's time to move forward with those two. That amounts to, on a yearly basis, an additional $43,310 in salary for each of the positions. And of course, there'd be benefits and so forth on top of that.
And that would be starting?
If we pass that tonight, it'd be in a place for them to start advertising and interviewing. So it's, hopefully they, there are hopefully going to fill them yet this year. Obviously, it's going to be a month or two before that.
On this one, we would have to create fine items and salary.
So we can have that ready as well for the September meeting to create the line item and to fund the line item.
I would, I would like to see these people, all the clerks in the courts go on our Cronos system just to help with payroll and the timekeeping. And I know we've had a problem in the past with people keeping track of their own comp time and things like that. And I would just like to suggest that, you know, if we're giving these people that they will have a little bit of breathing room and they should be able to do the proper work to get off Cronos like the rest of the county employees.
Is there anyone here from the courts that wants to?
Judge Horner or Judge Todd, do you have anything to say tonight?
If you're asking, will we agree? I will agree.
To the Cronos? To the Cronos?
If I could ask, why, why not?
We've gone over that. I'm not going to kind of get into it again. We are separate. We keep our own record-keeping. I'm not going to ask them to do that. I'm just not.
We have had a problem in the past.
If you did, it was never brought to my attention that I'm aware of.
It was a person who retired, who just had their own notebook of times or whatever that they want to pay, that comp time they want to pay for when they retire. Just keeps better track of vacation time and. Does anybody else have anything?
Well, Russian counties, that's huge cronos, so I think courts should too. I understand they need help, but give us a little break here.
Do we have a motion to?
I have a quick question. So when you're talking about Cronos, are you talking about just the three? If we move to hire these three clerks, are you talking about everybody that works?
No, I think everybody, that we can make their employees exempt and they just have to turn in their time that way, is what Kim explained to me.
Where I didn't, I didn't understand that.
The court employees could be exempt and they would just turn in their time. Is that not right?
I think there was an option on Cronos for the employees to simply track their time off. It wouldn't be exempt under Fair Labor Standards. She's talking exempt on a function within Cronos.
Okay.
That they would just, they wouldn't be clocking in and out, but they would be tracking vacation personnel that can be set up to accommodate.
Yeah, and the employees are already in there anyway, right?
We have to have them in there for reports.
Yeah.
Which is somewhat inactive within there.
So it's basically just to track comp time and vacation time?
And paid time off.
Paid time off. And that, is that not agreeable, Judge Horner?
Again, I don't want to speak for the judges. We haven't, we weren't aware of that, so we have not talked about that.
Can I suggest that we go ahead and talk about the clerks and give the judges time to talk to one another and come back on the Cronos issue? Would that be fair?
It's whatever you guys want.
So do we have a motion?
We don't have a motion, we'll bring it back up next.
We'll have to wait and talk about it at the next personnel meeting if we don't have a motion.
Okay, so are, just to make sure I have it down, we have, we are looking for three clerks, right?
One for each of the three courts.
I'm sorry, legal assistants.
Legal assistants, okay. Well, I would make the motion that, shall I know how to word this motion exactly? That we get the three legal assistants requested for the courts at the, whenever the comment number was.
Comment four.
Comment four for the courts.
At 21.31.
At 21.31 per hour? Is that all we need in that motion? Is it subject to the Cronos or?
No, no, I wouldn't make it subject to Cronos, but I would ask that the judges, we get together and come back to us in September and talk to us about the Cronos. But, but that's just my motion, is to do it that way.
I'm not really ready to vote unless I know the Cronos.
For sure.
So if we vote, I would be voting now.
Any, any other comments?
It sounds like we'd better wait till next month and as liaison to the courts and initiate that discussion, try to get a resolution to that.
Okay, so no second, so that motion dies? And what's our, we have another one, don't we? Is that everything?
I think that's all we need to do tonight. The rest of, on that list, the things that were passed out will be at the personnel meeting.
Okay.
Started that.
We have a transfer to take care of from the highway department. Max has that.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I didn't want to be rude or anything, but if you want to. Is there anything else that we would be here for that you need us to work?
You're good. Thanks.
I didn't want to walk out.
Thanks for coming. Thanks for coming.
Yes, I have good evening everybody.
Thank you.
Appreciate your work. Okay, Mike's got two separate transfer requests. One is in motor vehicle fund from Tyres, which is 1176, or 422310, .50 is .0533 to school tuition, which would be 1176.33915, .50 is .0531. That's for $4,900. It's to pay the tuition to hire or to send a new, hire a truck driver to the school that we've talked about in times past and have had people do. That's that one.
Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, the other is just simple from one category of material for the highways to other, from calcium chloride and salt, which is 1169.2220, .50, .40, of $28,600. The other from is 1169.22230, .50, .40, so only gravel for 50,000. That would all be a total of 78,600 transferred to by tumulus, which is 1169.22250, .50 is .40, total of 78,600.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any other discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There's none.
Presenting.
Yes.
When I indicated that we would have to count Barry absent, I did not see his beautiful face on the screen. Barry, if you could unmute your mic, can you give us a test audio, please?
Hey, good evening. I can hear you. Can you hear me?
I can hear you better than I can usually hear Jeff. I would respectfully suggest that Mr. Member Ritter be considered tardy to the meeting or late to the meeting. Tardy's a bad word, I'm sorry. School just started. Late to the meeting, from this point forward, after, you know, as Bobby will reflect in the minutes, he can be considered present and eligible to vote. Just don't lose your, our sight, line of sight with him.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
Welcome, Barry.
Thank you.
We can hear you very well.
I know, our sound is going well tonight. We are waiting on Brad Barrett to get here. He's supposed to be here anytime soon, so, um, I hate to make everybody wait, but he needs to, he needs to talk first before we go on to the health department budget. So let's, let's run down to, um, the twenty-twenty-three health fund. I understand we need to transfer money.
You got a, um, understanding from me of what money is required to finish this year for the health department and what money's, um, necessary to fund next year. The money that you've been, the health department's been operating on is money that was left over when you split. And I think it was nineteen, twenty, nineteen or twenty or whatever. And everybody was aware that once that money ran out, the county is responsible to put mu- money in to fund that department, which is required by law. My ana- analysis of it, the four hundred thousand, I think is what it was. Five hundred thousand is necessary to run this year. Next year, it would be, and after talking to a former auditor back here, who's also on the health department board, the estimate for next year is between five and six hundred thousand dollars. County money, the rest of it's miscellaneous revenue that comes in. I would think the council would want to put that in their budget for next year so that there's not a breakup of time between one year and the other. The other option is go ahead and put a million dollars in there and we'll write them a check for this year and next year.
Five, five hundred thousand dollars for a year for next year, then we want five hundred thousand for next year.
Yeah.
Seventy-three thousand is what it's back down.
My, my estimate originally was eight hundred thousand for next year. I'm not too sure what the miscellaneous revenue is going to be for next year. And if you had money left in that fund at the end of the year in twenty-four, it would, it would carry forward to twenty-five. It's not something that's going to be lost. Council has decided not to give the health department a tax rate, so this is the alternative to having a tax rate.
I understand that. Apparently, they don't need quite that much money for a half a year.
So what's the balance in that now?
You have a sheet from me, a fund balance?
I, I think we said that the table does not have a sheet.
It's negative eighty-seven, seven sixty-one, sixty-one, and that particular.
Health department right now is in the red, eighty-six thousand, four hundred and sixty-one dollars. Last month was, uh, seven hundred, seventy-six thousand dollars. And I believe you did receive something from my office about, um, a financial report that would reflect that.
Yeah, well, that's, that's what it looked at right now. It says, oh, ten, resulting balance, negative seventy-three thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars, forty-seven.
Okay, currently today is eighty-six thousand dollars.
What, what has been their expenditure thus far this year?
Year-to-date receipts have been three hundred, through today, three hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars.
Receipts?
Receipts.
Through today?
Today. The report that I have in front of me, I've requested my staff to give it to me daily.
How much have they spent year-to-date?
Pardon?
How much have they spent year-to-date?
Would that be three fifty-three plus eighty-six?
Four hundred and forty thousand dollars. The difference being the seven eighty, eighty-six thousand that's in the negative.
So what's been the expenses thus far this year, year-to-date?
Year-to-date expenses are four hundred and sixty thousand. Receipts are three, didn't bring my glasses, by the way. Three hundred and fifty-three thousand, the difference being the eighty-six thousand that are currently in the red.
And didn't they have a balance to begin the year with though?
She, they had a balance at the beginning of the year. I don't have that in front of me. It would be in the, uh, year-to-date receipts.
A hundred and thirty-six thousand.
Yeah. But the last two years, that, that balance has gone down each year, but I think the council, uh, been, there has been discussion between commissioners and council that this, this was coming.
Yeah, we haven't put money in the health for a couple of years because we haven't, we haven't had to. So, um,
One other question. Does the three hundred and fifty-three thousand of receipts year-to-date, did you say that included the beginning balance?
Yes.
Well, we need to note the beginning balance.
Yeah.
It, it says a hundred and thirty-six thousand.
Hey, don't I get on the sheet, show the beginning balance?
On one, on, on one one, it says a hundred and thirty-six, five, seven, seven. But I've got one different.
Based on my analysis of this request, these funds are what, what are necessary to keep that health department in the black.
And we, we understand that. We just want to know the numbers.
We're providing all the numbers we can provide.
Well, when you, when you say the total cash receipts are three hundred and fifty-two thousand, that doesn't tell me how many, what cash receipts came in if you don't know the beginning of the year number.
I think some point in my mess here, I've given you a, a sheet. I have to find it, that analyze that department plus others, give it cash balances at the beginning of the year, balances now. The balances you, that you, that you're going to need are given to me daily now and I don't know what else particularly give you.
So, um, unspent money at the end of the year stays in this fund rather than going back to the general fund?
That's right. It's correct. If you fund this five hundred thousand to the end of the year, that money does not go back to the general fund. It will stay in that fund. Then the twenty-four, uh, will require, I said eight hundred thousand, I'll stick with that.
How much in cash receipts, not from the county, do they produce per year?
Well, so far this year, they've produced three hundred and fifty-three thousand.
Minus the beginning of the year.
Minus the beginning balance.
But we don't know what that is.
So the beginning balance, I think, was roughly a hundred and, I'm not going to say.
It's a, on this paper from your office, one-one twenty-three, the beginning balance was one thirty-six, five, seventy-seven.
That sounds, that's right. That came from my office, by the way, didn't it?
Yeah.
Okay.
This was in our box. Put it in our slide.
So I have distributed to you the beginning balance of the first year as well as current balances, what I estimated to be the rest of the year. And what I gave you is the five hundred thousand is correct.
And so can you tell us in twenty-twenty-two what the cash receipts received were?
No. I don't have that on top of my head.
Bob, do you know?
The last three years, we received between two hundred and fifty and three hundred and ten thousand dollars, of which most of that comes at the beginning of the year from, uh, dues, fees and renewal of licenses, restaurants and that. We have a budget of approximately eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars. We get two hundred and seventy-five. The difference is what we've had. We've been remiss, the health department, from asking for this for the last two years. And that would work because we have a cash balance. We started the year with a cash balance of one thirty-six. If we spend our appropriations this year, we need, we did a cash flow of four hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars. And then we'll start the year with zero cash. That's why Auditor Olsher was saying in January, we're going to come back. Or you can give it to us.
Or we have it in budget. So to get to what you believe is a zero cash balance at the end of the year, you would need how much additional?
Four hundred and ninety-six thousand. If we spend a hundred.
You say four ninety-three?
Four ninety-six.
Ninety-six, okay. Thank you, Wayne. Appreciate that.
One other thing I'd like to mention with this is I would like, not like to put this off. We're currently running in the red on that account and I don't see any authority to do that. So I think it's something we're going to have to address. My request is out there. Um, I think it's an accurate request, maybe a little high for next year.
Right.
But if it is, it carries forward to the following year. If it's not, I'd like to be able to think that I've covered enough that I don't have to come back to council to request any more money in that fund.
And I think we can vote on what we need to finish out the year, but if we do five hundred thousand, then we can talk about the budget amount for next year in our budget talks. So.
Where, where would you take that money from?
Do we have that in council contingency area?
I think I've pointed out a couple of funds that I think you can take that from.
I don't know what that was. I don't have that in front of me.
Is that council contingency, Mark, or do you know where?
That's one of them. I had two. I think I gave you options on, um, I didn't bring that sheet with me because I thought it was past that point.
The project fund, uh, balance still has a little over a million dollars, about one point one million. We'll need to do an additional appropriation so that we can pay out the forgiveness, but the, the cost of the projects that were, are still in the works.
So we can transfer it from there?
We have to do that anyway.
Yeah, we have to do it.
We're already a million.
So we could transfer from the project fund for now and then do the appropriation.
What's the balance in that fund now?
About one million ninety-six thousand.
What's been appropriated out of it so far?
Yeah. It's, that's the balance.
It was three million. We've spent about two million. There's still a million.
Okay.
That's basically our one-time money, so we can take it out of there.
I don't want to take it out of a fund that money has been appropriated in already.
No, this is just our one-time, the council's one-time money. Because we're going to have to do an additional appropriation to fund the rest of these projects anyway.
Since they were.
So we can transfer this and then we'll do the additional appropriation on, on the whole amount later in the year, including the five hundred. So we're going to transfer from the council's one-time money.
The five hundred thousand?
If that's, if that's what the motion comes up to.
I would like to transfer the five hundred thousand from the projects fund to the health fund.
Second.
We have a motion by Max, a second by Tony Gillum. Is there any other discussion?
And part of your budget for?
All, all in favor?
Uh, now, now we're going to need to do the roll call.
We need a roll call, don't we? That's right, Barry's here. Okay, so, uh, uh, Max Smith?
Aye.
Tony Gillum?
Aye.
Kathy Williams?
Aye.
Gary Saunders?
Aye.
Barry Ritter?
Aye.
And Beth Leiser, aye. Motion passes. Okay, now, um, can somebody tell, I think I see Mr. Barrett out there. Can someone ask him to please come inside?
In your motion that you just made, is, did it include looking at appropriation in your, the current budgets you're going to?
No, we said, well, we will talk about that in our next budget, uh, session.
There's no problem running in the red, it's on the end of the year, right?
Well, I'm not going to, we won't run it in the red now after we transfer the five hundred thousand.
So, um, moving on, we have, um, Brad Barrett with us tonight to talk about Senate Bill Four, and he's graciously agreed to be here. And I've asked him to explain what the legislature intended for this bill.
Yeah. Yeah, so thanks for the opportunity to speak. Uh, this bill went through, uh, more discussion and debate than any bill that I've ever been a part of. And, and, uh, and honestly, I think the reason was just because of the timing and the pandemic and, uh, just, uh, all of that stress over the last two or three years. And so essentially, um, the idea came about because of absolutely horrible indicators, public health indicators in the state and an absolute lack of funding. And doesn't matter what study you read, there's a direct correlation between those two. And I guess I'm really not here to relitigate this or to, to find the problem, but just tell you what our intention was. And our, in, our legislative intent of this bill was to absolutely maintain local control. And there are several statements within the bill that define that. Secondly, it was to minimize the expansion of government. How do we formulate a way for public health departments to provide services without expanding buildings, without, uh, expanding facilities, without expanding staff? Now, granted, more work means, uh, you need, you need providers. But the ultimate goal would be, uh, and actually, in reality, and I, I think the health department can speak to this, some public health departments were, were grossly underfunded, understaffed. And so there is a correction that we expect will occur, uh, with the availability of some of these funds. Now, um, providing funds with no strings attached was important. Second thing is, it just wasn't a delivery of a bucket of money. We use some of the ideas that we've been using in, in, uh, the State House for the last eight to ten years, and that's grant programs where there are core services that the health department will provide, but then there are also initiatives to provide. And we would love to partner rather than expand in terms of those. And so there's a methodology for getting money through these grant programs and then not just, not just, uh, a bucket of money, but rather an accountability of feedback. The local government, the local health department deciding what the health problems are for an area. The local health department creating metrics. Guidance is available, but this empowers local government in every way, shape or form as we work this thing through the process. So, uh, so I think really, from a thirty-thousand-foot view, the key was, there's a serious problem, there's no funding. How can we add accountability to funding and not just, uh, uh, turn over buckets of money? There's a two-year budget cycle. How do we minimize, uh, expansion of government? How do we minimize expansion of workforce, understanding that there's a natural correction? And then, um, letting local government take, take over. And that comes from studying other states and developing best practices and, uh, just a lot of work went in. Like I said, more so than any other thing that I've been involved with over there. So that in a nutshell is what our legislative intent was. Now, that said, the Department of Health is available as well to kind, to kind of help with some of the guidance. There are a lot of questions. Can we opt out? Can we, is money, uh, how does this money transfer happen? You change your direction, you've changed your budget. Is there ability to change those kind of things? We've answered a lot of those over the course of the last two weeks, but I think you can get some real-time help from, uh, from the Department of Health then as well.
So the vision, Brad, was for the local health departments to identify the health needs in their community, but partner with other agencies instead of duplicating?
Absolutely, and that's where I think Wayne County has a huge advantage in, in terms of just the leverage to be able to partner with some of our other adjacent counties. There's no reason for every county to have a restaurant inspection or sewer, sewer inspection or whatever. I can't remember the, the core services, but. I can't remember the core services, but there's a great ability to partner and partner with local governments and adjacent counties and those around you that have similar, you know, the needs we have here are different than the needs they have in Northwest Indiana or someone down on the river. And so it's to allow that local control.
And then, just another question here. The funds are guaranteed for two years. There's no guarantee after that?
We go through an every-two-year budget cycle.
Right.
And there was great discussion on that. You know, the other thing I'll say is, this is not the state's first involvement in healthcare, not by a long shot. I mean, we spend, our second biggest expense in the state is our Medicaid program. And what we're doing is we're treating disease in a reactive fashion and not a proactive fashion. And as we've learned over the years, that there's advantages to preventive measures and education and doing things upfront. Instead of treating diabetes and cutting off legs, it's talking about diet and exercise. These are all voluntary things. No one's getting force-fed anything. If, these are all voluntary things in education, but data across the nation shows you can move the needle in these indicators.
Thank you.
What kind of review do you want to look at from the state? Or what's the local government's view of the roll call?
Yeah, well, you know, there's a whole metric set up where there's review on the funding through the Budgetary Office, and then we'll get those reports and look at them every two years. And every two years, this is going to be reviewed and looked at to see if it looks like the investment is worthwhile. I think the hard part in that regard is, you know, you're not going to move the needle on some of these things in two years. You know, you're, we need to come up with some short-term metrics or performance indicators that will show we're moving the needle in certain areas, but there's certain things that are going to take years to realize that there's some change or resolve.
Another question for you, Brad. As far as the funding is concerned, is it July 1 of '23 through June 30 of '25?
Yes, it's a two-year cycle. It starts, started in July. Now, that said, the opt-in is September 1, and I think money is distributed January 1. So there's a little bit of a delay. And then, two-thirds of the money, two-thirds of the money is given in the second wave and one-third upfront with the idea that there's a process, there's a ramp-up. There's not just an instant, an instant fix of a correction to these things. Easing into it, figuring out how the system works, figuring out the partnerships. I don't think there's any intention of being at full speed January 1. There's this understanding it's going to take time to ramp that up. And the legislature cut back the dollars invested in this significantly from the initial ask to, as we begin to understand the process of starting this in a sequential fashion.
So a lot of coordination has to take place the first six months.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I'm imagining that maybe you're having meetings about this with more frequency than you did a year ago.
I think so.
Yeah.
So what kind of approval of plans from the state? What's our flexibility as we get into this to make changes, major changes, minor changes?
There's great flexibility on that. We understand everybody's start from scratch. I think the Department of Health will be able to answer some of those implementation issues better. You know, I can tell you what our intention is. And there's no opposition to working out the kinks legislatively either. I think a lot of that can be done at the administrative level, but if we got to do that work statutorily, I know my colleagues are willing to do that.
Any other questions for Mr. Barrett? Thank you for coming. I appreciate it. That clarifies a lot of things.
You're welcome. I may just sit around for a little bit.
Yeah, that's great. We'd love for you to. All right, so Dr. Jetmore, we would like to hear from you.
Brad's a tough act to follow. But this is incredibly exciting. I remember sitting here thinking, this journey for me as your health officer started almost four years ago. I inherited an opioid crisis, then there was a syphilis outbreak, then a COVID, the pandemic of the century, and then we wound it up with a plastics fire. So it's nice to deal with what I think is an incredible legislative bill and one that will help us. You know, Indiana's kind of at the bottom of the metrics in the United States. And within Indiana, we, our citizens, ranking us and compared to other counties, we're 91st in potential life lost to injury, infant mortality, we're 60th, obesity 68th, smoking 57th. Our life expectancy is 90th. The top county, the people that live in that county live 10 years longer than the average Wayne County resident. So we're spending $11 per person, and the average person in the state has $55 spent on public health. You know, I spent my life as a surgeon, and Brad's right. It's so much better to prevent these diseases than cut something out or cut something off. And a healthy society is a society that takes part in the economy. I mean, healthy people buy houses, they work at jobs, and most importantly, they pay taxes. So I understand, one of the concerns with the council are county employees. And they are very concerned about having contractual employees. Our budget includes one county employee, and that's the environmental health officer. And the reason for that is that particular position has regulatory function. I mean, they have the power to shut down a tattoo parlor, for instance, or they have regulatory powers that I don't think a contractual worker would be able to wield effectively. But other than that, our contract is all contractual workers. The total amount that Wayne County is eligible for is $773,679. And under Personnel Services, we're going to move three county employees that are currently funded under local health trust account and local health maintenance account to the Health First Indiana Fund. And this new funding, should we opt in, will take the place of the trust and maintenance funds. Our budget accounts for the salary of the environmental specialists and their fringe benefits. The remaining employees that are needed to fulfill the core public health services that are outlined in the requirements of this will be contractual and will need $215,000 and change for these contractual employees. That brings us to a total of $446,353 in Personnel Services. Under the Supply Session on your budget, we're requesting $130,325 for vaccines, clinical supplies, equipment, tools, and office supplies. $100,000 of that $130,000 will be for the actual vaccine. Under Services and Charge portion of our budget, we're asking $160,000. $140,000 of that $160,000 will be in a partnership with the Richmond Fire Department to expand their paramedicine program to cover the entire county and not just the city of Richmond. The other $20,000 will cover travel and training for employees and advertisements for our programs around the county. We have a capital expenditure of $37,000 for one vehicle. These budget categories will equal the $773,679 for Health First Indiana funding. And I might add, I'm excited about all of the possibilities here of partnering with other people. We've already met with Reed Hospital and Jason Traubwines here. He may want to say something in that regard. But they were very excited to partner with us on this, with either supplying contract workers to us or performing some of these core services themselves. And I think the possibilities of partnering with these surrounding counties are going to be fantastic. I think we can bring more public health benefits to more people with less money in the overall scheme of things. So that said, thank you for your attention, and I hope you, I hope you decide to opt in. Did you want to say something, Jason?
Yeah.
Dr. Jetmore, you're taking three county employees out, the budget out, or go add one, so we're going to go away with two county employees.
Well, they're, they're working under grants now, and those grants expire, they will be under this budget. Their salaries will be under this budget.
As contract workers?
As contract.
Right now, they're county employees.
Yeah. No, they're not, they're not county employees.
They're just under grants.
They're under grants. They're under grants now, but they'll be, they'll be.
The county employee, the re, did my good. The medical assistant, the LP Ed, and the bookkeeper are currently county employees.
She's moving the funds that are being paid out of, so they're existing employees. She's moving them from another grant to this one.
Because this, this fund takes the place of the local health trust or local health maintenance. That goes away, and it becomes this, this fund. So we're moving those county employees into this fund.
So they're still county employees?
But they would still be county, they would still be county employees.
But you're only requesting one.
One new county employee would be the environmental health specialist. So they were county employees under the local health trust, local health maintenance fund, and we're just asking them to continue to be county employees under the Health First Indiana and keep the safe, other than adding the one environmentalist that has regulatory authority.
Because if we opt in, those two funds go away.
Right.
Still county employees, that one.
Right, but, yeah, right.
But they're already.
They're new, they're just moving from one to this one.
But we're not hiring any new county employees. They'll all be contractual except for that one environmental position.
Yeah, Dr. Jetmore. My understanding that if there's counties that don't opt in, then there's additional money that would be available. What would be the intentions of that money if there is sort of?
Well, Brad may be able to answer that. If other counties don't opt in, my understanding is they will be divided, that money will be divided among the counties that do opt in.
Yeah, that's, so they'll, they'll take the total number of counties and divide that total 75 million by that to determine the distribution. And then it goes back to your question about the flexibility and the fluidity of your budgeting. You're not locked in. You're going to, that number's going to change from tonight to September 1, right? So you have this three-month window to work on real-time changes to that.
So how many counties have opted in this morning, Brad?
This morning, I heard there were 80 out of the, was it 92? Eighty out of 92. And 93% of the population.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question here. You're saying that they're contract employees? Right, the three?
No.
They're, they have always been county employees funded by a grant. Now they'll be county employees funded by this Indiana First Fund.
And then any other people they hire will be contracted?
They'll all be contractual.
Other than, yeah, other than the one health specialist?
Other than the environmental health officer.
They would be contracted through another?
Hopefully re.
Potentially re. Yeah, I don't think that we can necessarily hire them and they be a contract employee if we're controlling.
I don't think that's your intent. I think your intent is to have a modified contractual.
Yeah.
Contract with contractual employees.
Contracted employees, not contracted, not contracted county employees.
They would be contracted with another agency, not contracted employees.
Not one new employee is my understanding.
Environmentalist.
And, and it will be, it is in this budget, so it will be paid for out of these funds.
Including benefits, I've said.
Yeah, yeah. He mentioned that. Jason, did you have something you wanted to tell us?
Yeah, yeah. I'm, in this, Tony, to your specific question, Reed's committed to being a partner with this. Obviously, we work very well with the Health Department. And many of the things that we're talking about here are same things we're working on. When we think about, you know, Dr. Jetmore mentioned, you know, from a health perspective, we rank 87th as a state overall with our health. And here that many counties have already opted in, I mean, we should probably listen to the fact that 80 other counties have opted in and that we're down at the bottom from a health rankings perspective. That's probably telling us something. We're committed to helping with this. We're committed to providing staff that can be contracted. We're also committed to the work that we're doing in community benefit, on our community health needs assessment, and our implementation plan to coalesce to those two things where we can enhance, you know, maybe some things that are part of the KPIs that are part of this that we're already doing, but maybe we're not doing it at a level that we need to be doing. And so we're able to combine sources, so, and resources. So this is something that Reed Health, very hopeful that we move forward on this, and we're very willing partner to be active in it. If you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer anything you have.
Thanks.
I don't think there's ever really been a big question whether we would opt in or not. We've been waiting for a budget. We've been waiting for a plan. I still don't see a plan I would like to see on how these things are going to happen, but we do have the next few months to work together with the Health Department and get those things more specifically nailed down.
We're aware of those, those core directives that the state wants us to work on, and we will, we'll flesh this in. We'll do all those things.
That's what we want to see. And that, that.
That'll happen.
Yeah, yeah. We just, I don't like operating at the 11th hour, but here we are again at the 11th hour.
So what specific is the action that we need to take?
Opt in to this funding.
Just to approve us opting in?
Well, approve this budget.
Approve this budget, knowing it can change or will change.
So the budget needs to be attached, the, Ron, correct me if I'm wrong, but the commissioners make the decision to opt in. The council makes the decision to allow this budget to go forward.
And you need both.
Yeah, we need that, okay.
And both need to be turned into the state by September 1 for us to opt in.
And did you guys, did you guys opt in?
We have not.
Okay, you will.
Mrs. Butters wasn't able to be here tonight. She asked if we could wait until next week, which is here because she is a strong supporter of this program, and she wanted to be able to vote as part of that process. So I told her we would do that. We'd be happy to have discussion with you, I think.
In all fairness, President Lee, I think we assured some members of the public too that before the commissioners do make a vote on opting in or out, that there would be an additional opportunity for public hearing at a commissioners meeting. I don't think you want to have that denied.
No, no, we are not advertised to do that tonight. But, so we just need a motion to approve this budget to go along with the commissioners opting in to.
I would make that motion here again. We just got this budget ten minutes ago, and I.
And there have been changes from when you saw it.
Right, but since we have the ability to, to make changes, I would make the motion that we have it approved so that we can opt in by the end of the month.
I have a second. We have a motion by Tony and a second by Gary, so we need a roll call vote here. So Max?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Barry?
Aye.
And myself as an aye. Unanimous, passed, and we will look forward to the commissioners opting in and working with everybody to make this thing happen.
I'll say, if I could, with, with the changes that we've seen since the last budget we saw, and the commitments to, to work with partners and to be able to. and the commitments to work with partners, to be able to work with them, to provide funding, to expand the services that they're able to provide in the community, and particularly with Reed Health's willingness to be a part of that process, I'm very comfortable with where we're at. We also have talked to the governor's office and we've talked to our representative, who's the author of the bill, and had assurances that, for example, the governor's office tracked down an answer to a question. If we opt into this and over the course of a year or two, we are unable to meet, for whatever reason, any of the expectations from the state, would we be required to pay any of the money back? And the answer from the governor's office was absolutely not, we would not need to repay it. You simply wouldn't be eligible to receive funding going forward. And so, you know, that's an issue that came up, and I'm comfortable with where we're at with that.
Yeah, I would agree. One of my biggest concerns was, the previous budget that we had was expanding the Health Department by eight employees or five. I feel much more comfortable with this now that we know that there's a partner with Reed that's willing to do a contract with these services that kind of duplicate what we're already doing, so. That's what I wanted to see, and I think that's what, as the commissioners, were asking all along from Christine to provide us with, so.
Any other comments or questions about this?
Appreciate you coming, I'll see you there.
I do, thanks for all of you guys getting together and working this out. Next up, we have a joint ordinance for the jail bond fund.
Not ready.
Not ready, okay, we don't have one. So, maybe next time. So then, one other thing, there's a proclamation in celebration of the sister city partnership between Hagerstown, Maryland and Hagerstown, Indiana, and I guess I need a, the commissioners, would the commissioners do this?
The commissioners have proclaimed it, so, aye, correct. We just want to be able to recognize the relationship that the cities have. It's been a decade years, this Saturday, Friday and Saturday is June, we get in Hagerstown and a delegation from Hagerstown, Maryland, who will be in Hagerstown. There's going to be a meeting Friday evening that they host, and there'll be this, so. This just puts us on record that we are in support of that sister city program between those two towns. It's noted, yeah, one other thing I wanted to say, it's noted on here, there's only two towns in the United States named Hagerstown. I didn't know that.
I didn't either, but when Mrs. Butters wrote that, I Googled it, and by golly, according to Google at least, there's only two towns.
Must be true.
Called Hagerstown.
It's on the internet, it's true.
I couldn't hardly believe it either, so. I would move that we approve this proclamation, authorize our president to sign that, give that to the town to present to Hagerstown, Maryland.
I'll second it. Okay, motion by Max, second by Kathy, Max, vote?
Yes.
Tony?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Barry?
Aye.
Mr. Hager, Mr. Hager's down over there, and my vote is aye. Thank you very much, motion passes. And...
I got a couple other things.
Okay.
Reminder, the Soil Conservation's having a tour Wednesday, they've sectioned an invitation, I know some of them said they're gone, but if anybody wants to go, it'd be a good morning. Also, I brought in a bunch of speed corn, it's in the room back here, if anybody wants some of that, take it, I'm not taking it home.
Yeah, the Soil Conservation Tour is on Wednesday, is that correct?
Yes, next Wednesday.
Unfortunately, I wasn't to be able to be there, but appreciate your attention. Yeah, you didn't put them up to that?
No, I didn't.
And we need to advertise, Bobby, we think we need to have another all-day budget session to get everything changed like it needs to be, get everything flushed out. We don't have a lot of money and we got a lot of requests, so we would like to do that on August the 30th.
What time?
Well, at seven thirty a.m.
You could run all day.
And, yeah, we'll be here as long as we have to be.
Did you mean here?
Here, in this room.
We won't have a meeting that day, so it'll be a problem.
And how many days do we have to advertise an executive session?
It's open door law, just forty-eight hours, notice Saturdays, Sundays, holidays excluded.
Okay, that may be possible about one situation, that we've had one before, so we will let you know for sure about that when we talk to the person that we need to have it with. So I think that's all we have for tonight, anybody have anything else? I will mention for WUR, we are going for our viewing audience, we're gonna have a tire collection again September 30th, and that's pretty much most of the schools here in Wayne and Union County. And we've done that in the past from nine a.m. to noon, so we have flyers out and advertising and things out. Motion to adjourn.
The schedule that you are gonna start going on, on your, the budget schedule, is not what I gave you, so apparently we're not gonna use this one?
You set, you set a schedule for us?
I set a schedule that your budget hearings would fit into, in other words, with the state's advertising and all that.
I mean, you have, you have times where you have to advertise the budget, but...
This isn't gonna be...
This is for us to do a workshop that we've got a lot of changes to make in the budget before it gets advertised.
But the initial...
What you got is what the state gives you as the last day to do stuff.
And the initial advertising won't be impacted by this because that's whatever was requested, which is higher than what you're setting up with.
Yeah.
One other thing, I'm gonna withdraw my request for a full-time person in my office. I'll put something in my budget for next year, but this is just dragging on past what I can do. I've got, four of my staff have four weeks' vacation coming up, I have staff of six, and I would ask anybody, you guys that are in business, how would you cover this? And I don't think you have an answer for me.
What about today's law? I don't know how I cover it, I've done the work myself.
Well, that's what we do here, but that's for a point you can't. But I'm gonna withdraw that request.
Tony, the first estimate of income tax was supposed to be...
See that again?
They normally do it at nine.
Well, probably.
Probably wasn't ready.
So we're not going over to any budget stuff tonight? Correct?
What?
We're not gonna go through any budget stuff tonight?
Well, we just, we had decided that we just need to be, have an all-day session because there's just so much to go over, and we had so much to cover tonight that we decided we just have to...
So my staff got ready tonight and it did not occur, correct?
What'd you have to do to get ready? We haven't changed anything. We spent forty-five minutes being able to get all this to work so we could do this.
That's your request.
Okay, I'm sorry, I guess we didn't communicate that, we just decided that, that we were gonna have an all-day session on the 30th.
And really, probably, if there were any questions, we want that available every time we meet until the final budget is approved.
So did we have a motion to adjourn?
I moved one, but I don't think I can do that.
I moved with adjourned.
Do we have a roll call vote? No, all in Hagerstown, including Barry.
Bye, Barry.
Bye, Barry.
Father.